Good evening. Welcome to Lebanon City Council, January 24th, 2023. Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mayor Messer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Norris.
Here.
Mr. Sellers.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Lammerow.
Here.
Mrs. Eggers.
Here.
Mr. Coe.
Here.
Please join us for the invocation and the pledge.
Bow your heads with me, please. Father and heaven, I just thank you for this day. Thank you for a beautiful, sunshiny day today. Thank you for an opportunity to serve our friends, family, and neighbors. Just pray that you just bless our words, actions, and deeds today in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible) The United States of America and true republic which sustains one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In consideration of council meeting minutes, January 10th, do I have a motion to adopt? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Consideration of work session minutes, December 6th, 2022, do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments there? Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
All right. Tonight, we have the opportunity to swear in three new firefighters. Our community is very fortunate to be served by a truly outstanding fire and emergency medical service, services department. The Lebanon Fire Division is staffed with dedicated men and women who are committed to providing the best possible fire and EMS response. Lebanon is a safer and better community because of what these dedicated professionals do for us every day. We are honored this evening to have the opportunity to swear in three new career firefighters who are joining our outstanding department. It's with great honor that I ask firefighters Andrew Valenti, Ethan Sparks, Quincy Pearson, and their families, and Fire Chief Steve Johnson to come forward.
Mr. Mayor and council, it is my privilege this evening to introduce to you these three fine individuals that are going to be joining the Lebanon Fire Department. First of all, we have firefighter Andrew Valenti. Andrew was hired as a career firefighter in July of 2022. He worked with the, he's worked in the fire service for two years prior to coming to Lebanon. He's worked at West Carrollton and Washington Township Fire Departments. Andrew graduated with honors from Ohio Northern University with a bachelor's degree in biology. He earned his paramedic certification in December of 2021 and is also an ACLS provider. Andrew is currently attending Warren County Career Center to earn his fire inspector certification. As a matter of fact, he was there in class today, so he left for class to come here today. So we're looking forward to getting that completed. In his free time, Andrew volunteers as a coach for the Valley View High School football team up in Montgomery County. Firefighter Ethan Sparks. Ethan's been with the Lebanon Fire Department since February of 2022, and he was promoted to career firefighter in September of last year. Ethan's worked in the fire service for both Lebanon and Hamilton Township. Ethan grew up in Colorado where he enjoyed baseball and competitive skiing. When not at work, he spends time with his girlfriend Avery, their dog Ginger, and Avery's cat Frank. Notice the emphasis on Avery's cat. Firefighter Quincy Pearson. Quincy's been with the Lebanon Fire Department in a part-time capacity since January of 2014, and he was promoted to career firefighter in December of last year. Quincy brings within 15 years of experience with both Lebanon and Franklin, and he is a paramedic, fire inspector, an EMS instructor, a PALS, and an ACLS provider. Quincy lives in the middle town with his wife of nine years, Belinda, and their dog, Luna. Quincy is a proud stepfather to a son serving in the Marine Corps who, along with his wife, drew the tough duty assignment of Hawaii. So I think we should go out and visit him, so.
So we'll read this, and then you guys feel welcome to pin your firefighters. "The city of Lebanon has placed special trust and confidence in the leadership and integrity and abilities of firefighters Andrew Valenti, Ethan Sparks, and Quincy Pearson. In view of these special qualities and their demonstration, and their demonstrated potential to serve our community, firefighters Valenti, Sparks, and Pearson's are welcome to the Lebanon Fire Department as career firefighters in the Lebanon Fire Division." May I pin your firefighters? Don't push it real hard. Tonight, we have with us Tom Calarko, and he's going to be speaking about the Underground Railroad. We're excited to hear from you tonight. Just state your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes, and then I'm sure council will have some, some questions, I'm sure.
I'm Tom Calarko, and I guess I'm a little short here. I'd like to add some humor. And Mr. Mayor, City Manager Brunka, and council members, and Mr. Urick, and fellow residents. Well, I was hoping the firemen would stay here, just because I was going to say something about them. But anyway, I'm Tom Calarko. I moved here this summer, but have been living in this area off and on for the last 10 years. Originally, I came to Ohio in 2005 to study the Underground Railroad, and I was living in the Delhi area. I had been given a commission to write an encyclopedia about the Underground Railroad. I had done work in upstate New York, that's where I'm from. The project evolved, and it turned out to be two encyclopedias. One of them is in the library, by the way, the ebook. It's been, now, it's been about 250 years since the Underground Railroad came into existence. It wasn't called that then. It was simply people helping other people get out of slavery, simply an act of human kindness and decency. It was in part what attracted me to study it. And this study of mine began 30 years ago. Now I'm writing my ninth book that relates to it, about a man who lived in the Lebanon Mainville area, Artson S. Murray. He came from Vermont and where he had been active in the Underground Railroad. Now, I still haven't found out if he was active here yet, but everyone he knew, all his closest friends, were involved in it. So probably he was. I hope to find out, and I hope maybe I can get information from other people in the area. So I started to look more closely at the Underground Railroad here in this area, in the Lebanon area, and it was a real hotbed. Waynesville, Harriesburg, Oakland, the leaders are Valentine Nicholson, Abram Allen, Dr. Abram Brook, and the Corwin family here in Lebanon. Now, the Underground Railroad, I believe, was the precursor to the Civil War. There were many battles that were fought over whether to aid fugitive slaves or to protect them, and they were fought often between, especially after the Fugitive Slave Law, between the county sheriffs and the federal marshals. One of them occurred in Mechanicsburg, and there was a battle between the county sheriffs and the federal marshals, and it went on in several counties, ending up in Clinton County. And it's described in detail in one of my books, The Search for the Underground Railroad in South Central Ohio, which also, the ebook is at the library. But if anybody would like a copy, they can let me know. And, okay, so it's probably not a coincidence that we are once again in a battle over states' rights, the same thing that led to the Civil War. And I think this is something that people need to know, that it's really important, I feel. Every time I see a Confederate flag, it's a symbol. It's like the swastika is the symbol of the Holocaust. The Confederate flag is the symbol of slavery. Here's what, this is, some people might be upset by this, but Confederate Vice President Alexander Stevens explained that the reason for the succession of the South was the proper status of the Negro in our form of civilization. Furthermore, he said, "Our new government's cornerstone rests upon the great truth that the Negro is not equal to the white man; that's slavery. Subordination to the superior race is his natural, abnormal condition." That's what that flag represents and why people find it to be so heinous when people display it. So more than ever is needed the study and commemoration of those who simply out of human kindness and decency helped others, like our firefighters who left, who upheld our most cherished virtue in all of our history. All men are created equal. That's why it's important to keep the Underground Railroad's memory alive. I already got an assistance from John Zirkus, Zirkus, is it Zirkus, right? I think you probably all know him, and I'm going to do a Zoom with Dylan at the library, and that'll be, February 8th is when I'm going to do it, and it'll be up online. So people, I'll talk more about the Underground Railroad. I'll have more than three minutes.
Is the, is the work that you've done in Lebanon so far, are you, are you finding homes? I know, I know this because my, my cousin, his home was, was part of it that he grew up in.
Well, I haven't done any detailed work, and that's why I'm here, to get help from local people, because I did a lot of this in New York where I'm from. I, I mean, I created a book from nothing, my first book. It took me 13 years, but that's how I started, and I did it in upstate New York. And I have like eight books out there right now. Tom Calarko looked me up. But I thought, oh, I've started to get, you know, looking into the Underground Railroad because I'm studying Artson Murray, and I found, wow, there's really a lot that went on here, and people just, if, if, there's so much information that we don't know about sometimes. I've discovered things because I looked very carefully and, and dug more than other people, because it wasn't so much I was interested in, I found other people were interested. And I think maybe I can get this community here, I hope.
Have you connected with the Historical Society?
Yes, John, John Zirkus, right, Zirkus, right.
Yeah, Zirkus, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's helping, he's helping me.
Good.
But I mean, there's local people. You might have family stories. I mean, you never know. And I thought, well, maybe I get other people interested, and it would be a good community effort.
Well, thank you for, for joining us tonight.
And I'd just like to add, Tom Calarko, or Tom Calriter at yahoo.com.
Can you spell, spell all of that?
T-O-M-C-A-L-W-R-I-T-E-R at yahoo.com. Or go to my website, Underground Railroad Conductor. I'm sort of, I'm the modern-day Underground Railroad conductor, at least of its history anyway.
Well, you're welcome to come back and, and share your, what you've found and, and give us any updates that you, that you have, so thanks for, for joining us tonight.
Thank you, and be sure, contact me anytime.
Is that book on your website? Is the book on your website?
Yeah.
And you can purchase it through that?
Yeah, you could, yeah. And you get it through the publisher, but there's a link to it.
Okay, and then the eighth, is that a, something people can attend? They're going to have the Zoom meeting on a big screen, or?
Yeah, and John is going to have me talk, well, about Artson Murray in the summer, but I'll mention Underground Railroad. He's got it scheduled for July, for their luncheon lecture.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Anyway, I just, it's Black History Month, so I thought this was the perfect time to bring this up.
Yeah, well, thank you, sir.
Awesome, thanks.
Thank you.
And I appreciate it because I think it's important, the historic, whatever history is, right, we have to learn it and understand it and, and grow from what occurred, right? So I appreciate the effort.
Yes, and just to add, I think a lot of people who display the Confederate symbols don't realize what it really means. So, you know, that's they need to know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Frances Stevenson. Thank you for coming.
Hi. I'm Mary Frances Stevenson, people, friends and family call me Mickey. I do live here in Lebanon, and I'm here to thank you all for promoting and continuing to promote the safe haven for the unborn. And it's interesting, the last conversation about the Underground Railroad and how slavery has been compared to, to pro-life and how we are fighting to save our brothers and sisters. Just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori Vires. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. I too just wanted to say a quick thank you. I'm so proud of Lebanon hearing tonight about our new firefighters, and a few weeks ago, we had the, the police officers, fine-looking young men that are going to protect us, and then hearing about the Lebanon's connection to the Underground Railroad. Springboro has a very rich history, too. I took that tour, and even now, when I drive through Springboro, you can see the windows that are like sidewalk level, and it just makes the hair on your back of your neck stand up. But I'm very proud of our, our area, and I wanted to just thank you for defending the pro-life ordinance, for caring about our citizens, born and unborn. Thank you. I know you had to make some clarifications, and I don't understand all the legal part of it, but thank you for sticking by that and for looking out for all of our citizens. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joshua Sor.
Evening, council. Joshus Sor, 722 Ridge Road, LHS graduate of 2000. I, like what Ms. Vires said, I'm just here to just commend you all in the sanctuary city for the unborn ordinance, and I know the people who oppose that ordinance, they're going to come at you, they're going to try to isolate you, but I'm just here to say, you're not, you're not isolated. You've got a lot of friends in this city for that, so keep up the good work.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our recognition of visitors. Thank you for, for coming tonight and speaking. Moving on to new business, Resolution 2023-007.
Resolution number 2023-007. I feel like somebody ought to play the James Bond. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Warren County Engineers' Office for the purchase of road salt.
It just wasn't road salt.
This resolution. This resolution will authorize the city to participate in the Warren County Engineers' Office salt purchasing program to bid out the city's road salt needs for the 2023-2024 snow response season. We currently participate in, in the program now.
Can I get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Scott, how much snow do we, how much snow, any snow that we've got called for? How much salt do we usually have on hand for a certain number of events, like, you know, a couple of major events, 10?
Yeah, we go, we go into the season with the, you know, salt storage dome full, and it can hold about 3,000 tons. In a typical season, you're in that 2,000 to 3,000 ton range. So we've had less, we've had more, so, you know, we will, you know, place orders as we progress to really make sure we're, you know, fully, fully stocked, so. But yeah, usually, I think at this point, we're probably on pace to hit that 2,000 to 3,000 ton level for the year. You know, we kind of resupply as.
Do we make our own brine, or is that a, I don't see tanks for brine.
No, no, we don't. We've tried that in the past. It is pretty corrosive to vehicles, so that was, you know, in the years past, we did that. We haven't done that the last few years. I think kind of what they're finding is just the corrosiveness. We will pre-treat if we got a few, like, of the hills, of trouble spots, we may do those, but we don't do it citywide.
Okay, I just like, today I noticed gnawed.
Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes. Resolution 2023-008.
Resolution 2023-008, petitioning the Warren County Board of County Commissioners for a change in township boundaries to extend the current boundary of Lebanon due to the recent buyer's property annexation into the city.
This resolution requests approval from the Warren County Board of County Commissioners to change the township boundaries so that the newly annexed buyer's property will be within the city limits of Lebanon. This is about 80 acres off of Kingsview Drive and our business park.
Very good. Have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments there?
I'm excited for the annex. It's a natural fit, and we're gonna, what is it, it was 80, 80 or 90 acres?
80.
Yeah, that's gonna add to the business park, so I think it's a great move.
Well, I think it goes along with what we talk about as far as continuing to grow the city of Lebanon, but making sure it keeps its historic charm, so I think this is a perfect fit, as, as you said, Mr. Coe.
Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-009.
Resolution number 2023-009, authorizing the 2023 civic donation program, utility credit program.
This resolution approves donations in the form of utility service credits to various civic nonprofit organizations which serve the Lebanon community. I did email out and also put in your seats an updated spreadsheet that shows a potential distribution of the utility credits for council to consider tonight.
So is, after reviewing what Scott put together here for, is everybody okay with, with how this is divvied up? We were able to pull money from, after reviewing the actual amount billed, we were actually, we were able to pull money from the budgeted amount and put those towards the Historical Society and the Humane Association.
I just need to make a comment that I'm going to recuse myself from this conversation because of my involvement with Safe on Main and, and the future with the Chamber.
Yep, no problem.
I would just like to comment and say that I truly appreciate the fact that we went through and made sure that the money that, or the credits that we were allocating to all of these organizations actually matched up with, you know, what they were billed, so that, you know, obviously, this is not just money that we're handing to these organizations, but it does come out of funds that we could collect as the city. And so therefore, you know, I firmly believe in being careful with taxpayer resources and taxpayer funds, and so I think it's a very good idea for us to do what we did by going back and, and looking at not just what's requested, but actually what was used before, so to make sure it matches up.
I would add too that, because I had, you know, made, also made the comment about, you know, this is, this is taxpayers' money, and the point was made, I forget which council, councilman or council member said it, but a lot of these, matter of fact, the majorities all have volunteer components. They're, so we have community members already putting into these organizations, and it's turning right around and doing good works for the city, so it's not like it's a private company that's getting some, you know, you know, helps out their bottom line or their margin. These are volunteer organizations in high order that turns right around and makes Lebanon what it is. Yeah.
Absolutely.
I think the dollar for dollar, and that's what we were talking about, the money they get in a credit, the, the work that they put back into the city as well over that. So again, this is taxpayer money that could have been received in another way, but we may be putting people out of business at that point, and if we did that, we would lose the value that each one of these organizations do, so. I think it's a good thing.
Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
I believe we need a motion.
Oh, sorry, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Upstain.
Resolution 2023-010.
Resolution number 2023-010, authorizing the 2023 event in-kind service donation program.
This resolution authorizes the city to provide support services to various community special events that are held in the public right of way. To qualify for this support, it needs to be a kind of free, open to the entire public event that's typically held in either a city park or on our streets, primarily downtown.
Can I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments?
I have one. Mr. Brunka is the, the free component in this listed clearly, and if someone were an organization when it comes, so they would know in advance.
Yeah.
I know there was an issue with an organization who felt they were to get, I think, advertising. Because that free extends it to the advertising.
Yeah, so our, kind of our social media marketing policy, that's one of the criteria, you know, for it to be a special event, which is, it is a permitted, you know, application, is it has to be open to the public and no admission.
Okay.
And anyone looking at this, I would encourage them to look on page 19 or 20. This is $60,000 worth of city labor that goes to these events. Examples, Martin Luther King Parade, Memorial Day Parade, Independence Day, Lebanon High School Homecoming, Graduation Procession, Chamber of Commerce, Third Friday Events, the Criterion, Country Music Festival. Those are the type of things that, that our, our city services are provided for. So pretty broad, Blues Festival, just about all the festivals. I think it's well, well-spent, and the hardest is on the guys and ladies working those events.
I would also just like to add that these events are, I know I enjoy them, my wife enjoys them as well, we love going to these, and these are some of the things that make Lebanon what it is, and I think it's very good and worthwhile for us to do this, and so I'm excited to see it, and again, excited for another year to attend all these parades and events.
The Blues Festival, you're.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, so.
11 months till the Carriage Parade. Yeah. I'm looking hard to, got my chair out already.
11 months too long.
Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Upstain.
Ordinance number 2023-1011.
Ordinance 2023-011, updating Section 133.02, approved position and titles of the Lebanon City Code.
This ordinance approves the addition of the electric locator and firefighter EMT positions to Section 133.02 of the city's code, which are the approved positions and titles.
Can I get a motion for a first read?
So moved.
Second. Second. Ordinance number 2023-012.
Ordinance number 2023-012, authorizing an agreement with game time for updating the playground equipment at Pleasant Square Park and declaring an emergency.
This ordinance authorizes an agreement with game time and the amount of $289,145 for the replacement of the existing playground equipment at Pleasant Square Park, which will include the demolition removal of the existing equipment. of the existing equipment. And it'll also include the installation of an artificial play surface similar to what was installed at Harmon Park.
Can I get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
We talked a little bit about this in the work session, so two hundred eighty-nine thousand is a massive amount of money. And it really, it's disturbing that playgrounds cost that much. But I guess, just to talk about it from my side, my professional side.
It's a charged admission.
So for the past six or seven years, I've, I've worked, so the NRPA, the National Parks and Recreation Association of Washington DC, created a designation called Certified Playground Inspector. And what that, it's a, it's a pretty tedious program for these men and women to go through. And what they do is, is they set the regulations and the standards for how our playgrounds are supposed to be designed, maintained, and, you know, kept up, installed, and that sort of thing. The, it's down to the size of the bolt. It's down to, it's incredibly detailed. They're looking for strangle points, pinch points, basically places for our kids to get hurt and hurt bad. So consequently, the manufacturer and the installers spend a ton of time and a ton of, there's a ton of research that goes into designing this stuff, and rightly so. I mean, we don't want to see anybody get hurt. But that's one of the reasons why the cost is pretty intense. We're, we're a long ways from the seventies and eighties when we had gravel surfacing and metal slides that you tore the skin off of your legs and everything else. So I don't, right or wrong, maybe we have PTSD over that, but you know, it is what it is. But this is, this is a good thing. And in, and our park, Harmon Park is, we talked a little bit about that, is, is just really well-attended. It seems like every time I drive by, there's just tons of people there. And anyway, it's a good thing, and our parks need updating.
All I heard was that it's the insurance industry's fault.
Actually, it's the lawyer's fault. He's the one to sue for the big money.
We're the good stuff.
We just write the check.
Boy, I'm excited to update this park and that, that part of the city. I think it needs it, and it'll be, I think it'll be well-attended. I know we have a lot of city events out there, so it'll be, it'll be cool to be out there with, with all the kids as they run around fire trucks and have National Night Out over there and things like that. So it'll go well with the new paving and the.
But a lot happening in that area.
Building, it'll be, be very good, very good.
I actually did a little research before I mentioned in the work session, because this number was also jarring to me as well. And one of the things that I found was that, you know, on average, they say it's about a thousand dollars per child that you have to budget for a playground. And of course, that was, from what I had found, pre, you know, current inflation. And so, you know, if you are school and you're expecting to have fifty kids on the playground at one time, then you have to budget about fifty thousand dollars or more now. So with the size of that park, and again, how much traffic it gets, I pass by that park a lot, you know, on my way to the post office and everything. I think that although this, again, this number appears very large, being six figures, I think it is very reasonable. And I think the city did a really good job with budgeting for it.
I think that whole vision for years, this goes back, is that, that, the Pleasant Street Park become a central location for that neighborhood with surrounding homes. We've got new homes being built the street over. There's a lot of work being done in the homes in that neighborhood. I think the AME is building their community center, I believe, right across the street.
I believe they're in the fundraising.
In the fundraising part, so there'll be another new, the, you know, the Academy Building looks great, the new post. So that part, you know, because I questioned it too, because I look, it looks fine to me until you explain, you know, the damages. And Mr. Insurance told us the dangers. All the lawyers around here were in the chop, so I had to, but no, it's, to me, you can never spend too much on parks. And Lebanon has got a lot going on in that area with Miller Park and the various other ones. It's hard to explore them all. And when we connect them with our bike trails, making it, kind of make that vision, you know, over the next three or four, five years, even out to Parkside, having access to that multi-acre park. We are, we're Tree City now, but we're going to be Tree and Park City, I think, pretty soon. So I love it.
Mr. Burke, please call a roll.
Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Discussion items, city managers' reports.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. There is not a meeting of council next week. It's the fifth Tuesday of the month. So the next meeting will be a work session on Tuesday, February seventh at seven PM. Would like to remind folks that we're currently, you know, getting ready to start the Citizen Academy Program, which will begin March second. It's, I think, a great opportunity to learn more about city services, our operations, finance, really everything that goes into the operational side of, of the city and how we do business. Registration is limited, so if folks are interested in participating, you can go on our website. You can sign up online or download a registration form, so.
Very good. You got any executive session for us tonight?
No, you're right.
Thank you. That's awesome. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
You got anything for us?
Well, I wanted to congratulate the firefighters that got sworn in tonight. I truly appreciate anybody who is willing to take on a job like that and put their lives on the line for people that they don't know. It's very easy for all of us to look at our family members and friends and say, yes, absolutely, I'd put my life on the line for you. But to do that for complete strangers, I think is something really special. So I thank them for that. I also want to thank the people who came today to speak on the Sanctuary City for the Unborn Ordinance. I remember in twenty twenty-one, when I came before council and I was on the other side of that podium, and I spoke in support of that ordinance. And it is truly a privilege and an honor to now be on council and have had the opportunity to vote, to help clarify and strengthen and uphold that same ordinance. I, when I spoke that day, I had mentioned that I believe that it is fair and just to judge a community based on how the individuals within that community choose to treat their most vulnerable. And I can't think of any group that is more vulnerable than unborn children. And I do agree that it is very appropriate, as we're heading into Black History Month. And again, the ties and connections that I see between this issue and the slavery issue, the issue of, you know, personhood of individuals, I think it's very appropriate that, you know, this issue once again came before us. I also want to thank Mayor Messer and previous council for what they did. You know, it's been two times now, as I mentioned, that this issue has come before the city. And both times, this city has answered the question of how we treat the most vulnerable correctly. But that started with a previous council, which you were on, and who else? Mayor Brewer, former Mayor Brewer. We had Joe Schaefer, Doug Shope, Wendy Monroe, Adam Matthews. Am I missing anybody else? Want to make sure? Yeah. And I truly appreciate that council for what they did. You know, they stood up tall on that issue and actually, in some ways, made it even easier for us to do so. And I hope that the example that we set will provide inspiration for future councils down the line, should this issue need to arise again. So with that.
Thanks, sir.
I'll keep my comments short. My voice is a little rough. Apparently, it doesn't like desert air. So first of all, congratulations to all the firefighters who were here this evening. You know, they're joining a great team of individuals, and I'm really glad that we can continue to move into the more full-time employees there that we really, really, really need. And also, I wanted to mention, Tom, when you were talking about the Underground Railroad, so as a child, I had a lot of connections with Ottervine Homes in Lebanon. And there was a building there called Marble Hall. And, you know, I don't know if you've been out there before, but the Shakers, you know, were there, and they had, in, in that particular building, that was part of the Underground Railroad. So as a kid, I was, I walked through there. My dad worked on remodeling those buildings. So that might be a place that you would want to go check out. They've torn, I believe they've mostly torn down that, but it's either completely torn down or mostly torn down. But they may, excuse me, still have some of the artifacts and things that they found there. Because when my dad was working there, he said they would reach their hands, somebody reached their hand up and found like a pipe, or they would just find all different kinds of neat things down there. And another place is the Octagon House. I don't know if any of you have been there. I had a friend that lived there when I was younger, and, you know, it was kind of the fun thing as a kid to take a peek down there. So that's a couple of places you might want to check out. And then, as Mr. Smith said, I, I continue to be very proud of all of our current council members and previous council members who have been involved in maintaining, you know, creating and maintaining the Sanctuary City ordinances and standing firm on those issues regardless of positive or negative feedback, that we just continue to stay firm on that. So that's all for me today.
Well, I echo quite a bit of what you said, especially with the firefighters and the police, recent police swearing-in ceremony. And what that means to the community is we move towards a full-time professional police or firefighting force. And the new building there, I mean, it just shows where Lebanon is headed as we make this community a great community for everybody. Thank you for the effort and the work that you do for Underground Railroad. I firmly believe, as we, as current citizens of this country, of the city, of this state, you know, we have to understand our history, all the faults, all the egregious things, all the good things. It needs to inform us of how we do have to consider, especially the division right now of a race, I mean, the personhood of, of everybody and the equality of, of all human beings, and how that touches on the abortion issue and the struggle for the right to life for those that can't speak. And even all the way up to, as I've been in the elder business now and senior living, as my eyes have been opened even into that realm, as dignity of life, it wound attuned the whole gamut. As, and we as a city took a stand to, in an important stand, to acknowledge all of humanity. We are human from conception to death, and what that means. So, and it is the right side in history. It will be the right side. We are on the right side for that argument. And I want to, I know that it's been tough for city employees with all the snow. That was brutal weekend, and, and, you know, just fighting through a couple of heavy snows here recently, from right before Christmas to the ones just last weekend, and what we're apparently going to get hit with here soon, too. So kudos to them, and, and safety and Godspeed, and keeping our roads safe and are open. So that's all I have.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Norris?
Can I go ask?
Of course.
Here, thank you. This is also serious.
You're still writing.
I got a bigger point. Entire page, yeah, a little bit.
Still taking notes.
Tom, I appreciate you coming to chair. And I, I grew up in northern Ohio, and, and I too grew up around a lot of, that was a hotbed. In fact, there was a house that I went by every day on the way to church, at the corner of two fifty and thirteen, just south of Vermillion, that went right, right along the Vermillion River. And it was a stop. And I guess the slaves and the folks helping them would travel that because it, for the most part, went due north. So kind of neat. I've actually been in Michigan, there's a room on a college up there where my kids go to school, where a handful of Baptist pastors got together to, to form the Republican Party. They were abolitionists, and they wanted to get rid of slavery and do everything they could through the politics. And it's really cool to see the, the history there. And I think that one of the last things, I really appreciate our, our city workers is they were cleaning the roads. And, and I want to remind everybody to maybe park in the driveway or the garage if possible. It's one of my understandings that the role of the vice mayor is to plow the roads. So Scott's going to be out tonight, and he's going to be running hard. His truck didn't have brakes.
For a while. So get out of there. He's just guarding their boxes.
So I also want to thank the firefighters that were sworn in today. It's a very thankless job, and, you know, but somebody's got to do it. And, you know, it's truly the definition of heroes, being able to run in there and burning, burning building, you know, without any thought of your own safety. So definitely appreciate that. Thank you for the city staff for this weekend, getting those roads cleaned up so fast. And they'll probably be out late tonight, I would assume.
With Scott.
Be with Scott. Might not even need to go out with Scott. But, and Tom, thanks also for, for coming and sharing a little bit of that history. I nerd out a little bit on American history, and, you know, I think it's always important, I think it's kind of a lost art, you know, it's not being taught as it needs to be taught in our schools. And, you know, one of my favorite quotes is, you know, John Dickinson quote where he said, you know, "Let history be our guide, as reason may mislead us." And, and just goes to, to show that, you know, history is very important. And that's what our country was founded on, was the history of, you know, Western government. And so I think it's very important that we hold dear to any type of history, local or, or national history that we possibly can. Also, you know, I'm really happy and proud to see our city clarify and strengthen our stance on the pro-life ordinance, you know, as we continue to fight for the most basic, basic natural right, right? You know, the, the right for all people, no matter their age, race, or creed, just to have an opportunity to, to live the life that God has granted them. And, you know, securing this and protecting this is the first job of government, right? And so it is our responsibility, we do have a duty to do this. And somehow, over the last fifty years, or a little bit more, you know, protecting innocent life that can't defend itself, has become controversial, which shows where we are as a society and why this is even more important than ever before. But it's not controversial here, not in Lebanon, Ohio. So I'm just proud and honored that we can continue to lead the way. So to you, Vice Mayor.
It's up to you. And just echoing what you said, I, on a regular basis, the whole Sanctuary City brought to light the importance of, of the abortion issue, for me, anyway. I've always been anti-abortion, but I've never taken like an active verbal or outward stance. And this has enabled me to do so. And also, living in a city that stood not once but twice by, by our commitment and the, and the men living ahead of us, I agree, like rightly saying, just proud, still an ongoing pride that Lebanon took that stance, that we recognize personhood where it needs to be recognized at. Also, just glad we have people wanting to work and live in Lebanon and stay. I think it's great. We're getting people to come to work in our police force and our, our fire department. It's always great to see those men and women come to, come to be with us. I want to thank Lori and Mickey and Josh for coming. This isn't a job to get a lot of thank yous, so it's nice to get those. I appreciate that. I personally appreciate that very much, and I know we all do it as well. I want to on a side note, thank Brighton for those great pictures. And there's a couple other people who do really cool pictures. The guy that does the drone shot to Lebanon, saw those. He did it during the snowstorm. It's just awesome.
Oh, nice.
But your pictures were really cool. I, those just, for my group in California that doesn't get, you know, the community thing here, I can send them, this is why Lebanon's so neat. So thank you for walking in the snow with your wife. I appreciate that. And the other thing I want to recognize, too, just you all six individually, and the collective skill set of our council, that when Brad can talk about insurance reasons for having a park, I never even thought of that. We've had lawyers talk, you know, with, Adam is here now, Brighton, who can bring in the legal aspect. Mike brings an amazing skill set with his, his application of business into some of our own developments, being able to read through very difficult readings and, and go bit by bit, and like he did last week, and really dissected that. The business owners, you know, Kristen works for a family business in town, Mark has his own business in town, I have my own business in town. It brings, it really, we're interwoven into the. into the Lebanon fabric, and that makes this a really neat council, Matt has his own business in town, so also glad you two got back safely, I was praying for you, absolutely, with the flights and the snow, et cetera, so glad you're here. Then on a lighter note, people that know me know I love three or four things very intensely, one is my Lord, that's always number one, number two are my family, second followed by friends, and my city, but I, but I also love. This is not a sport, Kobe, right, but it's clothes.
The Bengals underneath makes up for it. Overshadows anything I can wear.
Yeah, yeah, I love, so, this is all unofficial, so Mark, please don't worry about this again. In honor of facing insurmountable odds and ongoing national doubt and scrutiny, I declare unofficially, this week as Houday or Bengals Week in honor of our team and their ongoing and past play. The Bengals have united the nation and Ohio in an amazing way, got us through COVID, and it's been so much fun, so I cannot resist, I'm sorry if I make you trouble later, so this is national, Houday.
You continue to amaze me, Scott.
This is not up as I was getting dressed.
So good, why do I have to follow you? Yeah, I, the, the fire department, I'm excited to have three new, three new members to that department, we, as was mentioned multiple times, we're moving towards a, a full-time staff model, and this year, we're going to probably be funding from the general fund about $450,000 to the department, so coming up soon, we're going to have to start talking about fire levees and the different models that we're going to be looking at, and it's going to be important that we have all hands on deck from, from our council to, to the citizens as well, because some, some big decisions have to be made in regards to that department, and if we want to staff them to the level that is necessary to meet the needs of our city, so I'm important, I, I'm excited to tackle that important, that important job, and look forward to working through that with you guys. I am also excited about the, the fact that this council again stood, stood behind that pro-life ordinance, the previous council, I think, was, was united in the, in the fact under that, that it is important that you, that there is bodily autonomy, and sometimes that's missed in this abortion argument, because we're talking about another person, it is not, it is the mother, but it is also the baby inside, and that is a human being with a, with a specific and individual genetic code, and just like the, the council before us wouldn't force vaccines on our, on our employees, we are also, we are also united to, to protect the most vulnerable in our city, so, and again, I use the hashtag Lebanon Leads Away, and hopefully, we're going to lead it right up to Columbus, thank you, Mr. State Rep. for showing up tonight, and if you have anything, if you have anything for us, we'd be happy to, to hear any updates from the belly of the beast. Follow up, the Vice Mayor, the Norris report, but thank you so much, it's great to be back home, and it's, it brings a huge smile to my face to see such wonderful men and women up there, up there on the bench, you've done a great job already, thank you for your kind words, thank you for standing for life, thank you for being there against significant pressure, standing for the unborn, standing for all of our community. It'll be coming out soon, I will be put on, but from the things I've learned here, I've been equipped with a few skills, and I will be put on JCAR, which oversees all rules and regulations coming out of the administrative state, there's too many of them, and my job there is to go through all of the ones that don't make sense, and that includes rules put out by the Ohio Department of Health, the Board of Education, and other places like that, some of which definitely do touch the work here of council, and so I do ask all of you of my cell phone, please, if there's anything I can do to continue to promote and protect the real conservative values, and here in Lebanon, the conservative victories that we've worked to achieve, I would, I would love to continue to work on that team, because you've brought me to where I am now, and we're all going to be going forward in the future together to take what works forward, so thank you.
Thank you, sir, thanks for coming tonight. And then, and Mark, thank you for the work that you did on that, I know it's, your job is probably the most thankless job of everyone up here, so I appreciate, appreciate the work that you did and the countless hours that you spent with, with attorneys and, and going through that, so, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, I know, I don't know if he'll ever see this, but Jonathan Mitchell from Texas was very helpful, as was the law firm of Isaac Wiles, they're both very helpful in working through this, it was, it was a lot of work, but I think the taxpayers should be somewhat happy that, you know, we didn't have to pay any of the other side's attorney's fees, which I was, was a concern, and the, the ordinance is intact as amended in May, so, if I could add an aside.
Yeah.
Mr., is it, Clarko?
Clarko.
When it comes time to write the book on the history of chickens and related Indian history. There's an excellent starting point for you. Thank you.
And we've introduced everybody else tonight, are you, are you citizens, are you here for anything, anything special?
Sure, my name is Sean Smith, we're citizens here in Lebanon, we live right by Countryside, just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to be here, this is my son, Sean Smith, awesome, let him introduce himself, he's with the Boy Scouts of America.
Oh, very good.
He is coming to attend a city council meeting, part of his work on citizenship.
Yeah.
I'm S.J. Smith, and I'm here for, after a Tennessee council meeting, taking notes, I can respond to my counselor later about stuff that they discussed in the meeting, and so, so on and so forth.
What badge are you working on?
City, the community and communications.
Very good, well, thank you for joining us tonight, sorry for putting you on the spot.
My, my dad, I thought was very interested in my finding using, my son turned me, they, they work Boy Scouts of America, they're self-managed.
Yep.
And they work at each of their patrols, and he's had an elected official that meets once a month, it's called the Patrol Leader Council, and the adults, which I'm one of them, we sit in the back room, the boys run their meeting, make their decisions, make their hand, their meal plans, and when you guys start a meeting, and like you said, Dad, it's just like a P L C. You guys, it's, it's a great, it's a great example, you set our boys to watch, it's very much playing out in, in real life now, so thank you.
We appreciate that, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. All right, well, thank you for this great meeting, I will entertain a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mayor Messer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris.
Yes.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Lamero.
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers.
Yes.
Mr. Kope.
Houday.
Thank you, and we will see you in February, have a great night. All right, Brighton, your job.